The meeting is now being recorded.
He's on his way. I saw him outside.
Chair, hey, Chris, Randy Hutchins is on his way. He'll be about five minutes out.
Okay. He can, he can. We'll give it another 30 seconds or so. Roger is on his way. He's, I mean, I just saw him outside. Gives me time to put mustard. It depends on who you're talking to. All right. I'm Christopher Ilof. I'm going to call to order the Johnson County Planning Commission Meeting for Tuesday, April 25, 2022. And the first thing we're going to do is read a statement with regard to the nature of this meeting because it is both in person and by Zoom. Megan, do you have a statement you can read to us?
Well, we were gonna do roll call first, I believe, or that's what I was told we needed to do.
That's, that's fine. We were missing two parties who I think are on their way. But go ahead and we'll just note their introduction when they come. Yeah.
Dave Johns.
Here.
Chris Ilof.
Here.
Randy Hutchins. Jim Neese. Randy Downing.
Here.
Mark Huggins.
Here.
Roger Mason. Michael Levin.
Here.
George Lund.
Here.
Lindsay Grisay.
Here.
And Kelly Rast.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, do you want to read the statement?
Yes. This meeting is now being recorded. Please silence all electronic devices. Please note, this meeting is being held in the board hearing room, and the commissioners are attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. If you are using Zoom, you may participate in the meeting using your computer, telephone, or other electronic device. Zoom participants' chat will be disabled once the meeting begins. If you have trouble with Zoom, please call 913-715-1700. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app to notify planning staff of your desire to speak. To activate this function, click Raise Hand in the webinar controls at the bottom of the screen. By phone, you may raise your hand by dialing *9. Please do not use the Raise Your Hand function until the start of the agenda item about which you will speak. We will take comments from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. The Zoom moderator will call on individuals who have raised their hand. The chairman may modify these procedures as needed to conduct an orderly and efficient meeting. All speakers will be limited to three minutes unless the chair designates a different time period in order to accommodate all speakers desiring to speak. When your name is called by the moderator, your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, followed by your comments. If you share concerns, comments, or points made by others, please refrain from repeating those comments and instead, note for the record that you agree with the previous individual's comments. There will be a 10-second remaining warning sound. For board members and presenters, please state your name every time you begin speaking so the notes can be transcribed for the record. This is a public hearing. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Chris Freilof. I'm going to call the meeting to order and would ask if there are any objections to the approval of the agenda as printed before us. There are no objections. It will be accepted as printed. The next item is a consideration of the minutes of the previous Planning Commission Meeting of March 22, 2022. Are there any recommendations for changes or amendments to the minutes of the last meeting?
Yes, this is Kelly Grass. On page 13, I'm sure it's just a typo, but under my, one of my comments, it says 5450, and it says we 5050. That's all.
Kelly, what page was that on?
Page 13.
Thank you.
Any other recommendations for changes? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes with the change that Ms. Rast has suggested to our staff? It's been moved by Mr. Neese, a second.
Second.
By George Lund.
George.
And all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I would like to take just a moment. I think during the roll call that Terry Atwell may have been missed with regard to the roll call.
But she is present.
She is present. I just wanted to note that, that she is in fact here. And so, yeah, thank you very much. All right. We are now in the public comments section. I have four people listed. Actually, it looks like a couple is the first two, and the other three will be taken first. And then, do we have anybody on Zoom who has registered to make any public comments?
We do not.
All right. So we'll go ahead and start by, I'm going to call on Rob and Sharman McCollum.
Sharman McCollum, 15215 Edgerton Road, Gardner, Kansas. So we've said a lot of things in all these meetings about the solar farm, and I'm probably not going to say much that's particularly profound, but just want you guys to know that we're not going away. So I'm here today to stand in solidarity with our neighbors in the western Johnson County and eastern Douglas County area. This is what neighbors do. We help each other. And one positive from this sad situation has been meeting others who live in our area. It has brought us closer together as a community, and that has been a real pleasure. I would just like to say, we'd like to invite all of you to come to our place. You now have our address, and we will take you and show you around. So we live approximately one mile northwest of the proposed solar area border. And you can start by seeing where we live in our little air, little five-acre-ish plot. We have rich soil where we are growing two gardens. And just today, we planted green beans and lettuce. And you'll see our field where neighbors cut hay, our neighbor cuts hay every year. And next door to us, you would see where a young family have purchased a piece of land to build their dream home where their three young children can thrive. I would take you down the road to the neighbor's sheep farm and down the road to the meat store. And then we'd go down to the Lewis farm where Will Lewis, an industrious young man, is growing and selling vegetables and flowering plants, et cetera. And on and on we could go. I say all of this to demonstrate that you are about to ruin, beyond measure, a beautiful rural area where young and old enjoy a high quality of life. And then a rhetorical question. How many of you have personally visited this area and talked to all the people this will affect? How is it possible that you could look out only for the interests of a few, some of which do not even live in the country, instead of the interests of the many?
Yes, I will, I will permit another three minutes for you. Mr. McCollum?
Okay.
Yes?
My name is Robert McCollum, same address, 15215 Edgerton Road. We found out lately, for several years, that it's supposed to be...
Mr. McCollum, would you move the microphone over in front of yourself?
That the people that are supposed to be in charge haven't been going by the books as far as the bylaws, the state, or the county. And you came already up with a recommendation that wasn't apparently good enough for NextTerra. And so it was kicked back down to you guys to make it more in favor of NextTerra. And I just, I don't understand why the county, the reason the ratio of people was set up, it was supposed to be, from my understanding, 12 people on the board. And there was supposed to be three people from the city and nine from unincorporated. And that is to keep the cities from overrunning the county, to actually give us a say of what goes on out there. We have townships. We have all kinds of things. And there's no reason why those, the people on the board can't come from those townships. What are, what are the townships for, if it was for something like that? So I'm wondering that if everything has been done in the past, including this car nap thing that we're now hearing about, that they're going to make this corridor out there for traffic. Is any of this stuff legal that has gone on? Because nothing has been done by bylaws or state laws. Are the cities just in charge of everything that goes on out there? I, I don't understand why things can't be done the way the books say they're supposed to be done. And they say that we can use our land the way we want, and that's not true. I can't even put, I couldn't even put a roof on my house unless I got a permit to do that. But I could let the house fall apart and wood rot into nothing. There's one long 151st Street, a shed that is already in that condition right now. So it just doesn't make much sense, the laws that have been made up. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCollum. The next speaker is Lisa Huppy. And please forgive me if I did not pronounce your name correctly.
You did great. Most people don't. I'm Lisa Huppy. I live at 17535 Edgerton Road. And I'm about a couple miles from where the big solar farm that we're all, or the solar facility that we're all interested in right now. But we're interested in the county as a whole, and we are not against solar energy. So it's not just this one place. This is just one place they're looking at. There will be more. So the regulations that you put in place are going to affect a lot more people than the 200-plus families you're already thinking about affecting. They did not mention the Inrites Gardens, the nursery, Big Nursery, Wedding Venue, Whitetail Winery, the only dairy farm, the Norris Dairy Farm, the only dairy farm left in Johnson County that you will also be affecting. So be mindful when you're placing these utility-scale solar facilities out in the county. There's a lot of good stuff out there that you will literally ruin from the effects of the solar facilities, not to mention the devaluation of properties. I am a Realtor 20 years, so I know that undesirable views devalue your home. I think you would agree that if you have an undesirable view from your backyard or your window or your front porch you're driving home, it devalues your home. It makes it less marketable, thus decreasing the value. All of us will be affected by that, as well as your tax base. We have supplied you at one point or another, and we're going to supply it again, a property value damage study completed by Mary McClinton Clay, showing how these utility-scale solar facilities do in fact devalue homes in other places around the nation, depending on their proximity to these facilities. Some have devalued up to 30%. One homeowner sold their home. They were under contract for $225,000. When news of a utility-scale solar facility got out to the buyer, he canceled the contract. They asked him, would you buy the, the property if we decreased the price by $50,000 on a $225,000 home? He said no. He was a developer, and he knows how this devalues property. This is what you will do to us. And we're asking you to please be mindful when you're placing these utility-scale solar facilities. Be mindful of your citizens. We look to you to put good regulations in place to protect the citizens of this county. Not to mention the buffers around the city. You were talking about a one-mile buffer. I know that Edgerton calls for three-mile buffer in their comprehensive plan. Edgerton Community Development Director sent a letter to your staff requesting a two-mile buffer. That was ignored. So not only are you ignoring our comprehensive plan for rural Johnson County, you're ignoring the city's comprehensive plan as well. This is inexcusable. We just can't have you operating like this and not considering the people. Instead, you're considering big money out-of-state investors over your citizens. And I ask you to please not do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huppy. The next speaker is Corey Brandon.
Carrie Brandon, 450 East 2300 Road, Udora, Kansas. I just emailed you prior to coming over, Jay, and I copied you, Peg, and also the district attorney and Zach, his assistant, and the community as well. I copied. I'm just going to tell you, I did copy them, blind copy, because I want to kind of reiterate what Rob was pointing out. However, since Megan, right, you, thank very much for, I sent a core request and a Megan to get the Planning Commission Board members' actual official documented addresses with the county to make sure that I'm speaking, you know, educated about unincorporated versus incorporated ratio. And as I understand, if everything is truly like, and Lisa's kind of looking up as a Realtor to make sure everything is still unincorporated or incorporated, mostly, you know, confirming that unincorporated, still, the boundary lines are the same. If everyone indeed is adhering to that, that's fantastic. But I will, I want to go back, and I want to say that the concern isn't about the here and now. It's about past tense, because we've come a long way in the last year on specifically utility-scale solar and drafting the regulations based on discussions and a lot of research and a lot of input from people. At I-LERT, I believe it was appointed Terry, welcome to the Planning Commission, as a representation from the Southwest Consolidated Zoning Board. But that happened on April 7. And there's a lot that has happened prior to April 7. And Terry's appointment does, I believe, make the ratio correct, nine to three. But I'm not talking about the here and now. I'm talking about what has happened up until this point. And so what I would like to request is to work with you, Jay, and Peg, if you will allow it, to understand and confirm that Kansas State statutes and the Johnson County's Planning Commission bylaws, which I realize you're going to be talking about tonight, were adhered to, adhered to prior to April 7 and are going to continue to be adhered to moving forward from today's date after you guys accept your new bylaws. There's also other things that I just want to make sure that are in compliance, because there's a lot of Southwest or Consolidated Zoning Board members that are way past their terms. And then on the Southwest Consolidated, it says that there are four-year terms, and that can't be, it has to be three years. So if Jay and Peg, if you could reply to me at your convenience and let me know if we could sit down and have a conversation, so I'm clear on all of this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brandon. The last of our signed-in speakers is Joyce Whitter. Is Ms. Whitter here? Oh, yeah, thank you.
My name is Joyce Whittier, and I live at 7414 Flint Street, Shawnee, Kansas. I have a couple of things that are in the bylaws that were confusing. You reference some Kansas statutes. I believe it's 192957 that requires six specific studies be completed before any change to the comprehensive plan is made. I have seen no evidence that those studies have been made, so I'm just asking you if they have. And in the bylaws on paragraph 609, there's an example given. It says, "For example, a statute, by statute, a majority vote of all members of the JCPC is required to adopt a comprehensive plan, but not to recommend an amendment to the comprehensive plan." I saw no language in any of the statutes that were cited that said a majority was not required for an amendment. So that needs to be clarified. And the only other thing I want to mention is about the staff. This commission voted on, in November of last year, to basically reassess what had been done prior to that. But the board, the staff, less than three weeks later, put together a memo undoing what the Planning Commission had voted on and presented that to the Board of County Commissioners. If this was a private company and I was running it, they'd be looking for another job right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whittier. Any other member of the public that wishes to speak? If not, I'm going to, at this time, to use my privilege to turn the meeting over to Mr. Leipzig for a few minutes.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman, members of the commission. Welcome, everybody, to have a full 12, 12 people here this evening. I just wanted to briefly mention that this meeting is being presented both virtually and in person. So I appreciate that. I'm sure you're reading that statement this evening. Going forward, all of our Planning Commission meetings and all of our zoning board meetings will be in a hybrid format. So one of the things that we, we've kind of lessons learned as we, as we go through the process of the pandemic and having the virtual capabilities, we're able to do that. So I would say be patient with, with staff if there are some technical glitches or issues that we have to work through. However, we have several people here this evening that can watch and observe as well. So hopefully, at this point, there are none. But we're anticipating there will be some point in the future. So I think it's a learning curve for all of us with our DTI team and the planning team to get to this point. But I'm proud of us. I think it's a huge accomplishment to get to this, this point moving forward. So I just wanted to say that, that in the, in the future, this will have a hybrid option available for all of our meetings.
That's great. I think that's real improvement in county processes that has been brought to us by technology and forced on us by experience. So, great. Thank you. At this time, the next item on the agenda is continued discussion of the proposed bylaws of the Planning Commission, and I'm going to turn it over to our chief counsel, Peg Trent.
Mr. Chair, before we do that, we know for the record that Randy Hutchins arrived.
Thank you for 5:51.
I'm sorry.
5:51. Yeah, thank you. He's been here. Yeah, thank you, Sherry.
We're going to pull up the PDF version of the...
PDF. Okay. I apologize. Yep.
The reason, hi, good, good evening, Peg Trent, chief counsel. I wanted to make sure we have the exact document that's in your packet. And what had happened is, we were in meetings all afternoon, so I didn't get the final Word version. So that's why I wanted, I had them convert, so it wasn't correct. Okay, everyone can hear? Okay. So at this point, we have the PDF form. So as we left it at the last meeting, I had indicated that I wanted to go through, review everything, make any revisions, have some of my staff also review. One of the clauses that we were, I was real hesitant, and I wanted to just have some further dialogue and research on. And this is the clause pertaining to public participation. There was some information that was contained within that clause that I feel that is not valid or consistent with the current US Supreme Court cases. I'm going to try and scroll down here. And as a result of that, my staff and myself, we worked on this clause 6.12, and we took out quite a bit of information. We feel very confident in the information that is in this paragraph at this time. And at this point, I believe what we've had is staff go through and just clean up everything. So it's kind of flowing and consolidating, so there's no duplication. One of the other items that was added is the definition, what is ex parte communication? If you recall from our last meeting, we discussed, "Members of the JCPC shall disclose to planning staff." That language came for you. We, we drafted that language while we were here in the meeting. First part, though, just kind of tells you what is ex parte communication, so you know what that is. Other than that, I'm not sure there were revisions throughout the document just to do proper English. What happened is a lot of these clauses were copied from the Commissioner's Code of Order, is it Code of Order? And so we were just copying language that's kind of outdated and needed some cleanup, if you will, and updated. So staff did go through it, cleaned it up, and I think what you're seeing tonight is a better format of the document. At this point, I would stand for any questions or concerns or revisions you may have.
Ms. Trent? Chris Ilof, chairman. A question on ex parte communications. Given that we are a, the Planning Commission is a recommending body rather than a body that has the authority of law behind its decisions, would we be considered decision-making officials?
At this point, technically, you would be a legislative board, because you're, what you're doing is you're reviewing items that would ultimately land with new creation of regulations or anything along that line. So with ex parte, the reason we're including this, just to keep the record so that we know that all of you have the same information, and it's part of the record as it goes up to the Board of County Commissioners. And as you correctly noted, you are a recommending board. You're not the final stop for the, for that legislation to be adopted. Legislation being regulations or comprehensive plan or any document that you're revising. As a matter of fact, these bylaws will go up to the board for their approval.
I, I hear what you're saying, but I'm not sure I understood.
Okay.
I understood. Are we or are we not decision-making officials who have therefore the requirement of making ex parte communications known to the other members?
You, in your capacity on Kansas law, as a planning commission, you are a legislative body. Within your board, there is state statute and resolution that is that in Johnson County has determined that there needs to be certain composition of the board, of which you have zoning board members, where you do vote on actual applications and so forth. And that, you are a legislative board.
Lindsay Grisay, Ms. Trent, maybe to kind of key into what Chairman Ilof is getting at. I was curious where this definition came from, because what I understood normally, ex parte communications is just defined as communications that any of the commissioners have with members of the public or otherwise outside of this hearing. with members of the public or otherwise outside of this hearing. Um, and I think the decision-making official, I, I'm just wondering if maybe we delete decision-making official and just say JCPC commissioner.
I, I, I see where you're going. I apologize. Yes, that would be appropriate to do. We, we could take that definition. I actually.
Chairman, I love that. Is that, was that your concern? I, I thought.
Well, I was, I was just looking for a yes or no.
Well, it's not a yes or no. That's, as you know, as an attorney, it depends. And it depends on.
Dave, Dave John, not as an attorney.
True enough, true enough.
My question would be, so I take the columns up and this weekend I go out to their place. Is that ex parte in this definition?
Yes, you would need to, yes, you would need to come back to the planning commission or somehow put that you went out to the location to take them up on their offer to see that property. You then could describe to your colleagues what you observed. That is putting it all on the record. If they wanted to tell you, they told you specific information that wasn't told as a board, you could ask them and suggest to them to put it in writing so that the other board members have it or you could put it in writing yourself. We've had the county commissioners actually reduced to writing what others told them so that we make sure the record and that would be related to solar, that they've been doing that.
Jimmy, so I've got a question. Are the county, pardon me, are the, are the, is the Board of County Commissioners or is their entity or their, their position legislative?
They are both. So depending on the item that they are voting on, it could be decision-making where they're sitting in a judicial capacity. So that's a better word, judicial versus legislative. So they're both.
So then it's elective official?
Yeah, it would be elected official. And so what we would do, I think this is a great suggestion, is just to change this, uh, the identity of this to do a JC. We could just do a member, influence a member off the record, a JCPC member or just member.
Jimmy, so I still got another question. So I'm working. I still work. Okay? So my partner, uh, in a meeting that we're having in our office hears about the road that's going to be someday on the west side of Alitha. And it's going to come before us or a business out there that wants a conditional use permit. And he gives tirade about this thing going to be next to his farm out there. I work for him. I'm on this, this, in this capacity. And then I hear something from somebody else. Because I work in that company, am I going to have to recuse myself?
Um, Mr. Chairman, let me just clarify this and boil this down. So first of all, if you're sitting on the planning commission, you're talking about a CUP you're considering. A CUP would not come, a conditional use permit would not come before this body for vote.
I, I'm just using that as an example. He, I.
But that's a big difference.
He says, you know, the rules, da, 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 and he rails on this and I'm meeting nine men and thirty other people. And, and the neck, and I know that that's something that we're going to have to be talking about because they're going to be putting a road through there and some other things. We're going to have to change some situation here. So am I going to have to accuse myself?
Similar to what you're going on right now at the solar, you cannot.
I'm not talking about.
I know, but you cannot consider an application. You're looking at the information. So if it came before this board planning commission about the, let's say you have the regulations and you want to change the, how a conditional use permit is, you know, how you obtain it. And you're talking about some scenario, you know, of somebody that has an issue with a CUP permit. Then that is factoring into you when you're having the discussion about legislation. You may want to say, hey, board members, I had the situation and this may come up. So yes, you would describe it. But where you have to be cautious is if you, in your situation, which you're describing, if you have a conflict or under our code of ethics, there may be an issue with you voting on that regulation if you have more of a connection. But if it's just Joe Schmo out there talking to you about a CUP permit, then the right way to do it would be to just put it on the record that you had some contact with that individual. So the other board members know for the record what information you have and they can benefit for that information.
Jimmy, we just recently signed, uh, a couple of documents for the county. And, uh, I don't have that in front of me, but I think I signed something that said that we would comply.
Right.
So if I sign and get that notarized, I think we had to notarize it, and I swear that that's what I'm going to do. And I do that and I hear something or somebody says something to me that's not going to, that's not going to sway my vote. I, I, I just, that's what I just don't understand.
Okay, well, we have to separate it. So, Mr. Nice, correct me if I'm wrong, but you also serve on a zoning board too? Okay. So in your zoning board capacity, that's more that you're deciding on an application. On that particular board, that has a different standard. So when that's coming forward and you have a specific application in front of you that you received information on or you are working on that particular item or had done some type of work on that road and so you're personally involved, that would be a conflict situation, so you could not vote on that particular matter. Okay, on that case. However, when you come over to the planning commission, if you're just having regulations about conditional use permits in general and there is a discussion about road, it would depend upon, you know, if that is pertinent to what's going on as it relates to the conditional permit with roads. I don't know what you would be considering.
Well, let me ask you this, Jimmy. What does, what does, uh, what weight as members here and on the zoning board do we take with a comprehensive plan? Because every time that we've, that we've studied and we have, you know, we have up on the board to show everybody what, what the comprehensive plans really, I don't have it in front of me, but it's about growth and so on and so on and so forth. How much weight do we put into that? Because the, the issue that we have in front of us coming pretty soon, okay, bring some of that into question for me personally. So my question to you is, how much weight do you really put into that comprehensive plan?
Well, your regulations for you as the planning commission, the comprehensive plan is the foundation for your regulations. So your regulations stem from what you've determined in the comprehensive plan. Hence, when we have solar, it's going to be remanded back to you. It's important that we update the comprehensive plan to address solar before you go and promulgate or recommend regulations.
We don't use it, we don't use a comprehensive plan as a, as a foundation to make judgment on what the upgrade is going to be for a particular, I don't care whether it's solar or anything else. Could be rock quarries. So, so we, we tailor the comprehensive plan to the issue that comes before us? Or do we use a comprehensive plan as a foundation to make a judgment of what comes before us and what changes to make?
Let me, let me interrupt here. Mr. Nice, we're talking about one specific part of the bylaws and that is ex parte communications. And we've gotten far afield here. This is a more or less philosophical sort of discussion that's going on here. And if we're going to get through this tonight, I think we need to focus on the issues that are in the bylaw. As I understand it, uh, because of the question with regard to what a decision-making official is, that we would change that to a JCPC, a, a member of the Johnson County Planning Commission. So that would make it, it, it clear what, what we're talking about in section six point one three. And are, so let me ask the, the commission, are there other questions with regard to section six point one three that you have that would make it clearer for you what your role would be?
Uh, this is Lindsay Gressay. To Chairman Nisa's question, maybe I could articulate how I've read that section as far as, because I'm currently working. And as far as when should ex parte communication rise to that level to be disclosed? I think that was your initial question is, if you're at work and somebody makes a comment about something, does that rise to the level of disclosure or not? And so, right, and because you, you know, maybe work for that person. And Ms. Trent, I'd be curious on if you agree with what I'm going to say. But how I've interpreted it is, if someone is just casually mentioning something in my normal day-to-day job, I would not consider that an ex parte communication. But two things, if they mention it to me, knowing I'm a planning commission member and hey, as a planning commission member, think of blah, 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 then to me that rises to the level of ex parte communication. And then the second thing, I think what Ms. Trent was getting at was if your employer starts talking about, well, hey, it would benefit our company for this road to be improved or it would benefit the company, then that would rise to the level of conflict of interest. You know, probably a more direct pekineer conflict. So that's how I've thought through those things, but I just wanted to address that.
Chris Iliff, chairman, I think Ms. Crusade makes a good distinction there. And I would like, this is slightly aside, but as a practical matter, I think it might be a good idea to put on to our agendas as a regular item, ex parte communications with members of the planning commission. This would be an opportunity for people to disclose whether they've been out meeting with people in the community and taking their suggestions or advice or, or, or not, as the case may be. So I, I would like that disclosed. I think that would be helpful if people would disclose that before we get into the substance of, of a meeting.
This is Kelly Rass. We do that in the zoning boards. That's part of the agenda. They ask any disclosures or conflicts of interest, whatever. So absolutely, I think it needs to be.
Right.
Right up there.
Mr. Chairman, it's in the bylaws to be added.
What's that?
We have it as part of your bylaws now, that it will add that as six point.
Well, see, you're just that far ahead of me. So great. Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Randy Downing. So how do we handle any communication we have with county commissioners?
That would be probably just like what occurred at your last meeting, just disclosing it openly that I had visited with the county commissioner about this, just like a citizen.
Uh, Lindsay Gressay, also just for my fellow commissioners to note that one of the other ways we can disclose without, you know, bogging down the meetings is I've been forwarding, you know, Ms. Whittier had sent a, a good email to some of us. I just forwarded that to Mr. Leipzig to add it to the public record. So that might be a way too, if you're having email communications or something, I just forward it to Mr. Leipzig. Then we don't have to, it's, it's just an option for us.
Yeah, it, that's a great point. If you get emails from the commissioners or anybody in the public and just forward that to planning staff and it'll be made part of the record. Or if it's verbal, you just disclose it.
Mr. Chairman, Mark Huggins. I guess I'd like to take this a little different slant. I, I own an engineering company and surveying company that, that makes application to county on occasion. And I, these comprehensive plan and all the regulations affect my business. Sounds like from this discussion that I might be in conflict being here at all.
So we have to go case by case because we don't know what's being brought forward, but there are going to be those opportunities. And so it's just a matter of having a conversation with legal and legal will review it with you. Just pick up the phone and ask and we will discuss it with you whether there's a conflict about what is before the board as to whether there's a conflict or a conflict with the code of ethics. But, you know, we're looking at it, um, you know, it, it, literally, I can't predict. Some things just happen, evolve that you didn't have a conflict at the beginning and then it occurs. And it isn't that you intended, it just happens. So we just have to be diligent and you have to be diligent to actually be aware and, and communicating with our office.
Yeah, Chris, I'll find, I would say that for people who are the most knowledgeable and experienced in the field of planning, to not be eligible to serve on the planning commission would be extremely counterproductive. But if something rises to a true area of conflict, then one, one would have to, to disclose that or to recuse oneself, but, um, that happens very seldom.
And, and just to further elaborate, um, in Kansas, just the, your composition and the way that it's set up in Kansas with your planning commission, you have zoning board members that have to be on the board. So there's a chance that what you're hearing as the planning commission, you're going to hear over in your zoning board that you sit on. So this is, you know, the legislature, when they set this up, they thought of this and didn't think much of it as being a problem, but it's something that you have to be mindful of and just having that conversation with us, you know, to make sure that we're communicating and understanding and seeing if you have a conflict.
Ms. Trent?
Um, I don't have anything else unless you do. What I would recommend is that you would need to bring this as a motion on the floor. And then if you wanted to amend section six point thirteen to reflect the change in the language as an amendment and then voting on the main moment, amendment, or if there's any other revisions.
This is Mike Levin. I had a question about section four point oh nine.
Okay.
I apologize, I forgot my actual copy in my office. Can you, on the conflict of interest? Last time there was discussion about how, if there was a conflict, how the procedure would actually happen as to find resolution? And I apologize if it's in there and I'm just not seeing it. Is it actually spelled out in there?
Yeah, um, the backend as to the code of ethics and what goes on and transpires and that is not contained in this document because that's a separate document. But it does say that in a case of an inquiry or a complaint filed by a member of the public or any other person. And just so you know, sometimes I come into information as legal counsel. So I'll even have one of our staff members look into something because I want to make sure that, you know, that if I'm hearing something, then I want to make sure that we're looking into it to see if it's a conflict. So what would happen at that point? My, myself or my designee, which I have a staff member designated, would make a recommendation to you or to that person as to whether there is a conflict of interest. And then you have added in the language that if then, let's say the person agrees and steps down, then they can just recuse themselves as part of this. But if they don't agree, then it can go to a vote of the board, of the board of you and you can decide as a majority whether you believe that is a, um, conflict. And as I stated at the last meeting, if I feel there is a conflict, I'm just one voice. Your voice would be heard, but it will go to, I will take it to the next level, which is the ethic advisory board in order for them to make the, be the final arbiter, even though you made your recommendation, because it could go both ways. My concern also, just so you're aware, is I can't do this in executive session. So if you have a discussion or a vote, there's going to have to be some disclosure out in open and a vote. And that kind of goes a lot of ways bad because of what we're doing. And what we're trying to do is if there is a conflict, you're coming to us potentially. We're making that decision. You're recusing. That's confidential between you and, um, you know, you're, so we're not disclosing it to the board and you're just saying, I've got a recusal and the board doesn't need to know why, you know, other than it's a conflict. So this is, this is a procedure you wanted. I'm fine with whatever you want at this point because I know that I have an obligation ethically to take it forward. One other thing is, um, we try to resolve these per the code of ethics without having to take it to the advisory board. And like I said, nine out of ten times, everyone's agreeing and everybody steps aside or does what they need to do. We're here trying to just make sure there's just not that appearance of impropriety.
Thank you. This is Mike Levin again. Just for the record too, I believe there's a typo in the middle of the paragraph. I just saw it says Toto, which is.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a great group. I have tickets to the concert coming up.
Thank you.
This is Kelly Rass. I have a question. Likewise, like if somebody, if your approach to be recused, is it within our rights to know who submitted that?
Oh yeah, I don't have any problem telling you that's public record. So if someone comes forward with an email, we've, we've disclosed that and told you who it was.
Oh.
So we will.
Past.
Yours wasn't. If you want to know, I'll be candid. If we want to be it out in the open, it was, I had heard something within my office. And so I looked into it and found it not to be the case.
Okay.
And I hear a lot.
Oh, I'm sure.
And it comes around and it, and it's nobody being, it's just, we're, we're in the, the hub of hearing things and seeing things. So we talk among ourselves, it's nothing. And I will ask someone to look into it just to make sure. And it's for your protection too, because if I've heard it, someone else has heard it. We don't want it being circulated out in public.
Okay. I have one other question. Is it possible to answer Ms. Whittier's questions regarding the study she brought up or that one Kansas statute?
And I would rather just deal with answering her one on one in her email and doing it by email.
Well, I was kind of interested in the answer too.
Okay. Well, I can't remember the questions.
I'm going to say that in order to get done with this now, I'd, I'd like to proceed on.
This is part of it. I have a question about one of the areas.
Ask your question.
I am. Okay. Can you please explain the Kansas statute nineteen twenty nine sixty?
I don't have that handy right now on me. I think it was nineteen twenty nine fifty seven, I think she said. And I don't have that.
I mean, if we're going by bylaws and there are certain things that we're supposed to be following.
Yeah, I know, but not all of it is.
So some stuff counts, some doesn't.
Well, no, I'm being very respectful, but some of what was said, I was aware of those comments were not. Thank you. Okay.
I mean, I just want clarification. What's true, what's not? Cause I'm not familiar with it. So. You can clarify. That'd be awesome.
Okay. So within, and it was twenty nine sixty. So I stand corrected. I wrote fifty seven. What it basically says, and I read under nineteen twenty nine sixty, the Board of County Commissioners by resolution may provide for the adoption of amendment of zoning regulations for the unincorporated portion of the county in the manner and for the purposes provided in this act. Such regulations may restrict and regulate the height, number of stories and size of buildings, the percentage of lots that may be occupied, the size of yards, courts and other spaces, the density of population, including minimum width, depth and area of lots, the location and use of building structures, land for industry, trade, the use of land. Such resolutions shall define the boundaries of the zoning classification. So these are areas that you can amend. And I have basically said that in the upper part of the bylaws of what you have, the authority and what you're looking at in your role when you're looking at it. Ms. Whittier wants you to have verbatim the state statute. We didn't put that state statute in it, but it does not mean that it's not applying because as you well know, if you've been doing your job here with regulations, it's dealing with those exact items.
Okay, thank you.
The second question of Ms. Whittier was on six point oh nine, if I recall.
Correct.
Six point oh nine. I'm not sure what Ms. Whittier's concerned, but it was something related to majority of the vote of the members present.
Ms. Ms. Trent, I think right in the middle of the paragraph of six point oh nine, it says that the majority vote of all members of the Johnson County Planning Commission is required to adopt the comprehensive plan, but not to recommend an amendment. And I think the, if I understood her question, it was to try to say, okay, then what is required for the amendment if not a majority?
It's a majority of those present for the amendment. And so that is taken from states, I believe state statute, and it says it in state statute. On a, on the initial adoption of comprehensive plan, and we could take that out because you've already adopted your comprehensive plan. It's surplus, surplus or whatever the word is. You don't need it. We could take it out. But it's to recommend an amendment to the comprehensive would be by a majority vote. That seems to make more, more sense, I think.
Maybe if, if that sentence just read, a majority of vote of all members of the Johnson County Planning Commission is required to adopt or amend the.
No, it's not to amend. It's a simple majority. So it's a majority of the members. Correct, Mr. Lynn? It's not. It's the comprehensive plan is of all members. An amendment is not of all. It's.
Rick Lynn, Legal Department pegs correct. In order to first adopt the comp plan, it takes a majority vote of all members of the planning commission. In order to do an amendment, it's a majority of just those members present.
Of the quorum?
Yes.
Okay.
So we could amend it, but it says members present at a meeting unless expressly stated requires a majority of the, of all the members. So I, I, I don't think we need to amend it, but if you want me to, we can.
Lindsay Gerse, I don't know that we need to amend it as long as it's, you know, the state statute dictates what the voting is. This doesn't in conflict, I don't think. It's maybe a little unclear, but to get this passed, I, at least I'm confident that the language is written.
Roger Mason, I think it's very clear. I think we should proceed.
Okay. And then the other comment from Ms. Whittier was a comment on the commissioners and had nothing related to this. I don't recall any other comments. Am I correct? Okay.
Just those two. Thank you.
So that's all I had. If there aren't any other questions.
I, at this point, unless there are questions of Ms. Trent, it really what we're need to do is to move to accept the bylaws with the amendments that have been discussed here tonight that help my dim memory.
It was paragraph six point thirteen to replace the wording of decision making official to J C P C member.
That's correct. Yeah. I think that was the only affirmative decision with regard or, or question that we all agreed on that needed to be changed. So the, at this point, do I hear a motion to accept the bylaws is printed here with that amendment to six point one three?
Roger Mason, I still move.
Can, can we open it up for some discussion just briefly?
Let's get the motion on the floor and then it will be open for discussion.
Thank you.
Correct. Do I hear a second?
Lindsay Gerse, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded discussion.
So perhaps, Randy Hutchins, perhaps I'm confused in our role here. Our role that I understood was we were representing the members of our community. And by representing their members of our community required us to reach out and understand what the members of our community were actually wanting, what their concerns were. So what I'm hearing now is that I have, I guess I'm now in conflict of interest of reaching out to the people of this. I guess I can't reach out to my, my county commissioner and have a conversation. And what I'm hearing, what my thoughts are, sounds like our county commissioner can reach out to whoever they want. But as a member of the, of the planning development commission, I can't reach out to members of the community without disclosing each and every person. Honestly, I feel like we're being set up for failure because if we don't disclose a conversation, you know, that I didn't think was meaningful, but somebody else determined, you know, at a higher level than me that it was meaningful, then now I'm set up, I'm set up with risk of, of not being a, not, not disclosing something. So I, I, I guess I'm completely confused of what our role is. I know our county commissioner participates in meetings with us in the public. She encourages, we're, we're talking about bringing members into our zoning board. We're going to be talking about bringing members into different sessions to get their feedback, especially around the roads and the conditions out in the unincorporated area. And now I'm supposed to disclose all this? I thought my job was be a navigator for the community and now I'm being told that, that I, I have to, you know, disclose all this ex parte communication. I, tell me, what is, what is my role? Am I elected official? I feel like even if I was elected official, even if I was elected county commissioner, I'd have more powers than what I have here because I know the county commissioners go out and meet with the people.
Well, Chris Iliff, just discussion. Here's my view. My view is that you can reach out to anybody you want, anytime to talk about any item that might come before the planning commission. And any member of the public can reach out to me and express his or her opinion with regard to items that are pending before the planning commission. And, and by, by pending before the planning commission, I'm not talking about general planning issues. If, if somebody comes and complains to you about the roads, the quality of roads out in Gardner or Edgerton, that's not really an issue before the planning commission. That's just somebody griping to somebody that they perceive to be someone with influence, which is, I think we've all learned is not true in the case of the planning commission. But nevertheless, I, I, I don't think it's a conflict. It doesn't keep you from voting. It doesn't keep you from expressing your opinions. I think what it means is that if someone comes to you and sits down with you with regard to an issue that is coming before or is before the planning commission and tells you their opinion and invites you, well, just tells you their opinion, or furthermore invites you to a meeting with a group of other people or to go and view a part of, part of the county. All it means is that during the portion of our agenda where we disclose ex parte communications, we simply revealed that that conversation took place. That's it. Period. Doesn't limit you in any way. It doesn't bind you. It doesn't, it's not a conflict. It's not a conflict of interest. It's not. It is nothing other than letting the other board members know that you had a, a meeting with people who wanted to influence what transpires here at the board. That's just my opinion, but I, it's based upon decades of serving here and on zoning boards as well. And in zoning boards where we actually make, you know, recommendations on C U Ps and you know, permitted zoning changes and that sort of thing. I think it, it's really critical that people know that you have had conversations. But, you know, I remember going out and looking at a goat farm before we decided whether or not they could have an excessive number of, of mini goats out there. And I simply disclosed that I'd gone and looked at it for myself. But nothing more than that. And it didn't, it wasn't a conflict. It, it didn't limit us. It didn't hinder us. And it was on the record and we moved on. Any other discussion with regard to the motion on the floor?
No, just one like little thing, Ms. Gerse here. One of the other, I, I wholeheartedly agree with you. And part of the reason that I accepted the appointment is because I enjoy talking to my neighbors, hearing the concerns of the community. One of the reasons I thought it was important to have this section in the bylaws was to actually give us permission to do that. And for, from your standpoint, I agree with Chairman Iliff wholeheartedly. I would only feel the need to disclose if there was a pending issue. For example, the solar farm is a big issue. If, and I think it's important not only to disclose among the fellow commissioners, but also the public. You know, for example, if NextTerra or any, any other solar pro, you know, solar company reach out to any of us directly, I think that that should be made public to the, to the public and to the community, just like getting an invite to somebody's farm or to see the land should be made public and give us all better decision making ability and better visibility and transparency to the public. That, that's how I would personally make the decision on disclosure. Ms. Trent, would you have a different? Does that seem to align with what your expectations are?
I think both of you have outlined it beautifully and said it well, well. And I feel, as a matter of fact, you know, in, in your role on the planning commission, you know, looking and, and seeing and, and reporting back, that helps people to understand where you're coming from and your decision making. And so this is just making a record and it is everything you said, transparency, being open and that, that doesn't create a conflict. Conflicts come from different manners.
So does the county commissioners report that they have talked to me? Is it, is it dependent upon them to report that they've had a conversation with me in their meeting, in their disclosure?
In their disclosures, when it's part of the record, you know, they will disclose it, but I, you know, at this point, I didn't know that they were talking with you, all of you, until I was enlightened at your last meeting. You know, and that made me understand that that's going on among all of the county commissioners, not just one. They're all doing it. So we have to take a look at it as a process and how that looks when it comes up to them. And some of them do, I have heard them say that I've had a conversation with so and so. They don't say the name and they'll talk about that conversation. So I have heard it happen from the dais. But yes, they're, they're going through the same review of their rules. And, you know, this is a new era of accountability in Johnson County, as you're seeing. So, I mean, it's going to happen now.
Just for the record, Chris Iliff, no county commissioner is talking to me. So I don't know whether to be offended or not. But at any rate, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed. Same sign. Genuinely passed. Thank you.
So for the record, I reached out and to my county commissioner and left her a voice message. I have not heard back from her yet.
You're in the same position I'm in then. All right. Directors report.
Chairman, Mr. Commissioner Jay Livesick, the planning director. My report seems to be very brief, just to point out in your attachment to Board of County Commissioners action is included in your. Also, the Board of County Commissioners public hearing regarding the solar facilities on, on April the fourth, that, that item was remanded back to the planning commission. And we have established a special meeting date of May tenth, twenty twenty two. It's a Tuesday evening at five forty five P M. And that, that meeting will be held in this building in a, in a virtual and hybrid, or excuse me, in person and hybrid format on, on May tenth. We also have a next regularly scheduled meeting on May twenty fourth, twenty twenty two at five forty five P M. And maybe used for further consideration of the solar amendments. And as I mentioned, the, the, the planning commissions, the rest of the solar amendments required to be completed by May twenty fourth, twenty twenty two. The other item to note, so chair is the, as I mentioned, the future planning commission meetings and discussion from video and streaming online. That is, we, we doing that in the future. So all of our meetings will be in that hybrid format. And the last item is that I became aware of a training today that the Mid America Regional Council is having on, it's a planning commissioner training, which they, they were having those fairly regularly until essentially until the pandemic, they kind of stopped it. But they do have a training scheduled for May twelfth, twenty twenty two. I don't know the exact time. I believe it's three o'clock in the afternoon. I'm going to confirm that. And we'll send out an email to you tomorrow. If any of you are interested in those training opportunities, it's usually free and, but I believe the, the training for this, this next session is focused on housing, but I don't know particular issues of housing, but they, they have these periodically for the Mid America Regional Council. And it's a great opportunity to, to network with other planning commission members in the area. And they, they have, they'll have four or five of those throughout the year. So encourage you to attend that if you're able to.
Yep. Thanks for letting us know about that, Ms. Livesick. I, I recommend any meetings with the Mid America Regional Council. They do a good job. Those meetings are usually held at their headquarters. Are they not?
Yes, it's six hundred Broadway in Kansas City, Missouri.
Right. Okay. Updates or other business? Here. Yes, Ms. Trent.
If I could discuss, as you heard from the director, you will be, the matter as to solar will be remanded back to the. If I could discuss, as you heard from the director, you will be, the matter as to solar will be remanded back to this board. As you recall, there were numerous conflicts that were identified at that particular time. So with that said, we would renew that those individuals that were previously conflicted would be, continue to be conflicted. And that results in someone else chairing that particular meeting. In our bylaws you just adopted, it indicated, I think, the most senior serving member. And with the planning commission, and I believe that Mr. Nice had served in that role, but was not, we've subsequently learned. But we didn't have bylaws at that time as the senior serving member. But now I think we have it that I believe we put in there that you could by vote determine what you, who you wanted to serve. So I'm putting that forward and I need to check the bylaws just to make sure it says that. But at this point, that decision point would need to be made tonight. And then if anyone had any questions about conflicts or anything moving forward to get with our office and we'll respond to anything.
Ms. Ms. Trent, just a quick question. This is Chairman Garcia. Would, would the chairman recuse from the entire meeting or just from the portion dealing with the item that there's a conflict?
Just the conflict.
Oh, okay. That, that's why I was just curious if it was, oh, no, the whole meeting or just the portion?
This Mike Levin, I have a quick question. I apologize about the question, but I'm going to ask it. So if there, a vote is taken to determine who the, the stand-in chairman is, are people who have to recuse themselves from that topic, are they allowed to vote in that? I'm just, oh, good question. All right. I'll feel bad.
I would say that they could be voting on that matter because it's not related to the source, about who's to serve in that role due to the chairman's conflict. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Can you refer me to the section of the bylaws?
Five point zero one. And we added unless another individual is chosen as acting chairperson for the meeting by a majority of those present. So that was contained in.
Who is the oldest serving?
I didn't say oldest.
I said oldest serving, oldest serving.
Jay Livesick, planning director, we believe it's George Lund, Mr. Lund.
Really?
Jim Nice, I have one other question. A meeting on the tenth, is it a, is it going to be public here? I mean, is it, is it a, what's the agenda for that? Excuse me.
Mr. Nice, Jay Livesick, planning director, it will be, that is a special meeting at five forty-five on May tenth. That will be a public hearing to discuss the solar regulations.
This is Kelly Rass. I have a question and I think I had addressed you with it before. So since they're remanding it back to us, I'm assuming there is things that obviously they did not, they had a different opinion on. So will they send their, I guess rebuttal or their facts of why they feel like they disagreed and then, you know, we can come back and I guess I'm looking at as a debate or did they just like, nope?
Mr. Rass, Jay Livesick, planning department, I will, in, as part of the, the remand action, it, it must include the reasons for why it was remanded back. So that would be part of the, the staff report, part of the.
Okay. Will they back that up with some sort of facts or data points or opinions? Or?
So they, right now, I believe there were eight categories, if I'm correct, that they had identified of issues for you to further review. And they indicated what they're suggesting. And there was the why articulated in those motions or during their discussions of why. So specifically, it was outlined, let me back up. It did not indicate why. It just gave you the eight reasons of what they wanted you to look at, to look and take another look at and what they're suggesting. Then what would happen is you would review, staff will bring those forward to you. And you would look at each of those eight areas, make a decision on whether you agree or disagree. And this time we're going to make sure that we capture why you are saying what you, what you're recommending.
But they're not, you clarified that they are not sending back a why?
No.
Okay.
We have the tran, do we have a transcript?
I watched it online.
We have the transcript, I believe.
Jim Nice, I've got a request. I, I attended that and some of us, I watched it online. I would like a manuscript of the minutes, exact minutes of that. I think that everybody here should get, get that because I did not hear any, I mean, they, they said we should do this, we should do that. We're going to send this back. They gave no reasons, concrete reasons to, to give us guidance to. And I didn't hear a lot of concrete reasons of why we sent to them what we did. There was almost none whatsoever. So I would like the minutes of that meeting. I would also like a copy of the minutes from the meeting when the staff presented it to the county commissioners. Okay. And I'd also like to have a minutes of the September meeting. The first, the first, the first presentation that you made, I think it was in September. I've got all those other, I've got all those minutes.
To this board or?
I, I think everybody, whether you read them or not, that's up to them. But we went from one separate recommendations through a series. I personally have got a couple sets of minutes and I think it's important. If they're sending it back to us for us to be, we understand the flow of activity that happened through the recommendations that we made. Okay. And I'm going to ask one other thing is the let, the county commissioner asked the staff. I can't quote him, but I think he said, what are the cities? What's their recommendation? And Sean said, he said what the recommendation was for Gardner. And then he said what the recommendation was for Edgerton. Edgerton gave a very detailed proposal to us to consider. And from, when my understanding was from what Sean said in the past is, is that, is that Gardner had kind of gone along with the new mile and a half, the new mile and a half. I'm sure that is what you said. And I think I'm right there, Sean. So what I would like is the letter from Edgerton copies letter and the letters from the, the other two cities, which would be Spring Hill and Gardner to be.
Overland Park.
And Overland Park, yes. And because the one from Gardner was on the back of a, it was on the backside of a copy from something else. At least mine was. And then I would like for that to be forwarded to the county commissioners. And that, if that's out of order, fine. But the county commissioners asked that question and I about, really about fell out of my seat when the county commissioner asked that. So either he knew and was asking for the general public or he didn't know and wanted to find out what that was. And there was no real presentation until that question was answered, what the cities really thought. So that's what, that's what I would.
Kelly Rass, I'd also like to get Douglas County's planning recommendations and what they adopted, because they adopted what was sent up to them. If I can have a copy of that, please.
Yes, Jay Livesick, we'll include all that information. I know that the full transcript of that board meeting will have all that information on it as well. And yes, as Commissioner Rass just mentioned, Douglas County, I believe, adopted their solar regulations. Last, was it last Tuesday or Wednesday, whatever date that would be. I apologize, I have a calendar in front of me, but they, they did recently adopt it last week. So we'll include that, that final version as well.
Lindsay Garcia, one other question for the upcoming meeting where we're going to be considering the solar regulations. For those of us who have received letters for recusal due to conflicts, how should we go about that process as far as, should we not show up to the meeting or? Because I think in the bylaws, it says we shall not be present, participate, vote. I'm just wanting to make sure for my plans, what the recommendations would be as far as the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, that is correct. Anybody that is recused or been asked to recuse, that would, they would not show up. And that would continue that they would not be present or they can show up and say they recuse, either way. You know, and we can recuse it, but I think for clean, just not to be present during that portion of the meeting that pertains to the solar.
And Ms. Trent Lindsay Garcia, if we're disputing the recusal for, you know, request or recommendation from council, then we would show up to the meeting, voice the, you know, kind of air both sides and have a majority vote and that would be the process. Is that what it sounds like?
Right. And we probably at that point would then move this to the advisory board to convene. And what my concern is if you start voting on May tenth, your vote is in question. If you were one of those individuals and that is, you know, concerning at this point. You know, we may, if that is an issue, we need to know as soon as possible. I don't think I can convene the board. I'll try as soon as possible, but we need to move rapidly.
Understood. Lindsay Garcia, this is why I wanted to have this conversation because if we are to be voting soon, we probably need that process to go forward, you know, on, you know, expediently. But for people who are contesting the process, you would show up to the next meeting or the recommendation, voice your, why you don't think that the recusal is necessary, why there isn't a conflict. And then we would vote as a board.
And then it will go, and it may not be already one and in the works of an advisory board right now. So.
Understood.
Yeah. So at this point, the sooner I know, the better. So I can do a parallel, whatever we're doing. So if it is incorrect, then they can participate and vote. But as early as May tenth, you could start voting on these amendments that are coming forward.
Ms. Trent, is there, do you, do we need to know that information also as far as for a quorum discussion?
Yes, we're, that's why I'm kind of needing to know as soon as possible. So we know whether you have a quorum. And you have by May twenty-fourth to review this and to return it back to the Board of County Commissioners. So your timeline is really short. And if we don't have a quorum right now for May tenth, then we would need to reset that meeting to a different date when everyone can be present. We already have May twenty-fourth, but that's a lot to put on a May twenty-fourth meeting. So you need two meetings, but we need to notify the public as soon as possible. And we would be able to notify through the Board of County Commissioner meetings. We'll get the word out if we do change that date. But the public's been told May tenth right now. So I'm trying to keep us to that date.
All right. Any other business to her motion to adjourn?
I think we had to vote on the chairman for that meeting, Dave Johns. And I'm, that was not me saying I want to be the chairman. That was me saying Dave Johns is the wrong order.
Your question is, are we voting on a chairman right now?
I think that's what we're supposed to do. And then we got off talking about all this good stuff.
Well, we, we did, and we might as well handle that now rather than at the beginning of the May ten meeting. And, you know, I sort of like the actual senior member of the board serving as chairman, unless he doesn't want to take that responsibility.
Okay.
All right.
Sure.
All right. Well, then I'm going to, you know, move that we put Mr. Lund in as chairman for the May ten meeting. Do I hear a second?
Terry Attwell, second.
All right. All in favor and Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
He, he being the senior member is automatic anyway.
Thank you very much. Thank you for doing that. I, I, I agree. It's, it's not a job I relish.
Chairman, all right. What, when will we start seeing this packet? It's starting to sound like the pack is going pretty thick. And I didn't take any speed reading classes.
Yes, good question. Mr. Mason, Sean Penley, planning staff. We are intent is to get that packet out for the May tenth special meeting. For sure, the week before, ideally, we were actually trying to get all that information ready, that our initial report ready this week. But the packet will go out next week. It would be at least one week prior to that meeting. So I believe it'd be May third. That, that would be the expected date. We'll try to get that posted online just as soon as it's ready. But May third is likely the date that that will be posted and ready for distribution to the county commissioner.
Okay. All right. We're adjourned.